That came up.
Consent. Got it. Yep, got it.
Just a calendar here.
All right, um, please put your cellphones on mute if you would. Microphones are all on. Don, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear. Thanks so much for joining us.
You bet.
Time being six o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Joe.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Sherry.
Here. We have a quorum present. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Item number four is approval of the agenda. There is one thing I do want to move around. I would like to take the executive session for personnel issue and place it as 4A right after public comment.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, I.
Or a second?
I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I would move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy to approve the amended agenda. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries, amended agenda is approved. So now is the time for public comment, and I do want to make one statement about item number 11, Article V, definitions and discussion. We will not be taking public comment during that discussion. So if you are here to make a comment on that, you need to do it either at the public comment in item four or at the public comment in item 16. So at this time, I will open the floor for public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, come up. You have three minutes. Come on up, Charlie. No, there should be a little button there. Push them all. There you go. You got the right one.
I'm Charlie Gross, 1510 Burley, and I have for the county commission. This is an 1883 county issued railroad bond that was redeemed in 1892. Larry Ness found it someplace. I had it framed and would like to present it to the county.
That's cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Charlie.
Very pretty. Everyone can see that. So we will find an appropriate place somewhere here to hang it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie.
Other public comments. So at this time, public comment is closed. So item number four is concluded. We will move to item 4A, which is executive session for personnel. So I need a motion to sit in executive session for personnel issue pursuant to SDCL 125-2, subpart 1.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Healy, second by Fox to go into executive session. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are now in executive session. Yep, Don, you're going to be muted during executive session.
That'll be fine.
Okay. Wanda, you want to click your microphone? Thank you. Entertain a motion to come out of the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Healy, second by Fox to come out of executive session. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
It's not on.
There you go.
Matt Archer, Director of Equalization. Effective 6/15/2020, I, Matthew Archer, formally resign as the Director of Equalization. After 16 years, it's time for me to change careers. I've always strived to innovate and assist others in the county and increase efficiencies and create a family-like environment for my staff. After the events of the last few weeks, I reevaluated continuing my employment with Yankton County. I feel like it's the best interest in my family, my health, and also my business to step away. I only regret that I can't give my work family more time. I feel they are well more than qualified. In closing, I have stressed for years the importance of HR for this county. And if anything comes out of me resigning, is I hope that the county finds the money and implements HR. And HR is not for the department heads. HR is for the employees. And with that, there's going to be a lot of you guys that I'm going to miss.
So one thing I would like to say is I have, I'm getting a little choked up. I have worked with Matt and his team for the last, has it been two and a half years already? It's a good team, solid team, and I'm very sad to see him go. Not just for me, but for the county. He's done some great things. And with that, we need to make a motion to accept his resignation.
So moved.
I need a second. Need a second.
I don't want a second. I want to keep him.
We need a second.
Maybe by force.
Motion by Healy, second by Fox to accept the resignation of Matt Archer, effective 6/15 of 2021. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. So with that, we will move on to item number five, approval of minutes from June 1st, the joint.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to appoint?
Oh, yep, thank you. Before we move on, we do need to appoint a temporary. Thank you for that. Do I have a nomination or a motion?
I'd move to appoint Jeff Putoff as temporary Director of Equalization.
Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox to appoint Jeff Putoff as our temporary equalization director. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. We do need to advertise to fill the director position. Do you need a motion for that, Patty? So we need a motion to advertise to fill Director of Equalization.
I would move to advertise for a new Director of Equalization.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Clemish to advertise for Director of Equalization opening. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Yes. So now we will move on to item number five, June 1st minutes from the joint planning county commission meeting.
I'd move to approve the minutes.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Clemish to approve the minutes for the June 1, 2021 Joint Planning County Commission Meeting. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. Now for the June 1 regular commission meeting minutes.
I have a change on action 21264Z.
On what page?
Uh, I don't, page 5. It said there's a deed restriction placed on the lots, and I don't, that's not accurate. There was no such restriction placed on that. That was the Dean-Gustad variance. So I think it should say a motion was made by Clemish, second by Kettering to approve the variance based on findings of fact. And then I think it needs to be deleted that the planning commission meeting, the deed restriction on that the lots are not to be separated. That shouldn't be.
Can I just put no deed restriction?
Yeah, yeah. That, that part wasn't in there, and I'm fine with it. Everything else seemed accurate to me.
Okay.
But I don't recall that was discussed unless one of the. It happens.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the amended minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish to approve the amended minutes for the county commission meeting on June 1st. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. So that concludes item five. Item six, claims.
Kettering moves approval.
Second.
So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy to approve the claims as submitted. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now have the auditor treasurer report and pool cash reports. You did get new reports emailed to you.
Move approval of amended reports.
Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox to approve the pool cash and auditor treasurer reports. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. Budgeted cash transfer.
And it is in the budget, and I do have a copy of the budget where it is at. And we are only transferring 150 from general cash to emergency management.
Have a motion to approve the transfer.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Healy, second by Fox to approve the budgeted cash transfer of 150,000 to the emergency management fund. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. We have one right-of-way. Any issues with the right-of-way?
I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion by Healy, second by Clemish to approve the right-of-way application for mid-continent communications on Dear Boulevard. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. And then the last item in there, I did have Patty add that. Did you look up the total? Do you have that with you, Patty? I know it's 2.2, it's 2.2 million. I did want to say we have confirmed receipt of our first tranche from the federal government for the ARP, American Rescue Plan Act. And it is 2.2 million and change. So we will receive the second payment one year from the date we received the first. So that did, that did clear the bank, I guess. It didn't bounce. So, and we will be having a meeting next Friday to start talking a little bit about the use of those funds going forward because we have four years to spend them. $2,215,676 is what we received. So that is not reflected in the financial reports that we just approved. That will be seen next month at the pool cash report. So just an FYI, counties are starting to receive their disbursements. Any questions on that before we move on? Okay. Item number seven, Mr. Hawkins, come on up.
Steve.
Hi, everybody. Didn't want to have to follow that. Could have been warned. I would have brought tissue for myself, right? Okay, so what the, what the situation is, is that in our QMC report or agreement that we have, QMC is our billing company, during the negotiation process, I, they, they did.
Gary.
The.
Yep, Don, go ahead.
Can you speak a little closer to the mic, please? I can hardly hear you.
Better, Don?
Thank you.
You're back. So just recapping, our QMC agreement for our billing, they, one of the things is that they charged a debit card or computer fee, and we got that removed during the negotiation and it, and it ended up back into the contract or in the agreement, kind of weird worded, I thought. And that's why, and I don't think anybody picked up on it. Anyhow, they, they caught it a year afterwards. They have not charged us anything. They don't want to make us do that. They just make us pay that fee. They just want to clean up the wording, the verbiage, and have a little addendum. So the addendum I submitted to in the, in the, in the packet, kind of the little email that we got from Suzanne, our accounts manager, and then the actual addendum itself. So I guess, do you guys have any questions about that?
No.
So you just need us to approve first addendum to billing agreement.
Yes, and your signature, Chair Baden.
So this credit card agreement is so people can pay you via credit card?
Yeah, what they do now, they're currently paying, making payments on their credit card. They can set up direct withdrawals, the whole thing, as they make payments. But they, I guess what we're doing is so that we don't have to pay that credit card transfer.
To make it clear, make it clear that we don't pay that.
Make it very clear that we don't have.
So we, we don't pay any fees associated?
That is correct.
How'd you swing that? That's pretty incredible.
It was just part of that, that when they were trying to get our business, that's all.
Yeah, that could be two and a half percent or more plus that transaction fee. So great job on that. How long is this an effect for, man?
Um, the agreement is pretty much just, is evergreen. It just kind of keeps going for at least, they said they probably won't be addressing it for at least three years. And then, then we go back and I'll just say, no, we'll keep it the same way and, you know. They told us that they never raised it, but you know how that is. It's all sales, it's all, it's all, it's all salesmanship.
Yep. I'd move approval of the first addendum to billing agreement with Quick Med Claims LLC.
I'll second that.
Motion by Healy, second by Clemish to approve the first addendum with Quick Med Claims. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0.
Do you want me to just type this on here or do?
I need to send it to.
There you go.
Yeah, just a name and.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
And have a very safe 4th of July.
You too.
Hope we all do. It's awful dry.
Yep, it is.
So we are at item number eight, equalization report. They may have. See if they're out there. If not, we'll move on.
Maybe this is something we should just skip over for tonight.
I'd move to.
Item number nine.
Table this.
Table or continue?
Can I just say that no discussion was?
That's fine. We'll put it on a later one. So let me check here. 6:30, we're good to go. Go ahead, Gary.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 21ZN04, establishing temporary ordinance regarding the issuance of local medical cannabis establishment permits and/or licenses for Yankton County, South Dakota, providing for the administration enforcement and amendments thereof, and repealing all ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith. Yankton County is adopting this ordinance in order to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of Yankton County.
Okay, so since this is a reading, I will open this up for public comment at this time. Would anyone care to make a public comment on the temporary ordinance for medical cannabis? Public comment is closed with no comment. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion.
I'd move to adopt the temporary resolution.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Clemish to adopt ordinance 21ZN04 for medical cannabis. Further discussion? Roll call vote on this.
Wanda?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. So now, Deb, it takes effect Friday, so. So three days?
Yep.
Okay.
Next item, we have one plat in front of you tonight, plat of tract one, Reed Edition, in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section 10, township 93 north, range 55 west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
So I have a motion by Clemish, second by Healy to approve the plat for Reed Edition, tract one. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, and that was motion Clemish, second, Healy. All right. So we are at item number 11, which is titled Article V, Definitions and Discussion. Don, did you want to start off on this?
No, I'm, I just wanted it on the agenda so we discuss it. I, I, we had our joint meeting, as everyone knows, and, and the vote was taken by, I believe, both the planning commission and the city, and the county commission, and, and both approved it. So now we have some changes to talk about, I guess.
So do you want to talk about the amendments that were presented at the planning commission?
I don't have them in front of me, and it would be very difficult for me to pull them up, I guess, at this time. Can somebody else take that on, please?
Discussing that. I mean, shouldn't this be in a public hearing that we're doing that?
Microphone.
It's on. I mean, I know the planning commission made their decision, the next step, correct me if I'm wrong, is a hearing at the county, right?
And those would be held in the two meetings in July because we didn't have enough time to notice this meeting for a hearing, so.
I think we can have all the discussion we want up to the hearing.
Never know you get to the hearing. That's.
So I didn't know if there were specific details that everybody wanted to discuss, or if we just delay this discussion to the hearings in July.
Gary, what's your recommendation on this, on zoning for these readings?
Yeah, since this is a discussion, you certainly can talk about. I didn't know, like Don said, he wanted on the agenda for discussion. I guess the primary point for, that was brought up was the special permitted uses. And so he didn't know if you wanted to just discuss that at all or not. And so that, if, if that was something you wanted to do before the hearings, this would probably be the time to do that.
Anyone want to make any comments on special permitted uses?
I'm looking for the definition.
You know, I would kind of tag off of what Don said, and there's things in, in these changes that maybe I would like, and there's things I don't like. And in the ordinance proposal, there's both things I like and don't like. But I guess I would agree with Don. We, we held public hearings on those things. We had numerous discussions at the commission level, at planning and zoning level. I thought it was pretty clear that where we ended was where we were going to end.
Yeah, and I would concur with that. We've had numerous meetings over six months, and we finally had a joint meeting. And we finalized the direction we were heading after that joint meeting. So at this time, I guess I don't have any discussion for tonight. Don, if there are some specifics you would like to cover, otherwise, we can wait until the official public hearings, which will be two meetings in July. July 6 and 20. Thank you.
Yeah, right. I, I guess I'm just, with as much effort as the planning committee went into and as, as the commission went through, I'm disappointed. I, I, I guess I thought if, if it's mainly an issue that, that could be discussed, that would open up further discussion by those that want to see additional changes, it may be advantageous to do that prior to the July meetings. I'm, I'm sure those that objected to the Article V changes and the definition changes will, if they don't get their way, will choose to go to a referendum vote on the issue. And it'd just be nice to get this resolved and move forward. I would, I would say that I asked Mr. Conklin to query the other counties in the state as to how they handle their definitions. And many, haha, and Lincoln do not handle, are they, I think the only two that he had that. Are they, I think the only two that he had identified, as of the date he emailed me, as to the special uses. And I think in, in our meeting, in our hearing, it was indicated that every county in the state had, was handling it differently than we had defined it, which is not true.
Any other comments by the commission? We're not taking public comment at this time.
I was told by your planning and zoning administrator I left work early because he said that I could.
We are taking public comment.
At the end.
At the beginning and the end, and I made that statement right at the beginning of the meeting. So other comments from the commissioners?
No, I think we need to have the hearings on July sixth and twentieth, and then be done with Article Five.
And, and.
I mean, I've only been here six months, and I've talked.
Seems like forever, doesn't it?
I have talked about Article Five more times than I've talked about a lot of things.
Yes, it's, it's been on almost every one of our agendas, and almost every planning commission agenda, and we've had special meetings around it. So at this time, I believe our discussion tonight is done, and we will move on and held our hearings and get public feedback at that time. Moving on to item number twelve, request to purchase a laptop. Mr. Mangold, come on up.
Very well, Mr. Mangold's coming up. For some reason, I, I'm really losing power fast, so I may, I may get cut off.
Okay, thanks for the warning, Don.
Mariachi band, I can hear.
Keith is calling him.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Cody Mangold, I'm with the Yankton County Veteran Service Office.
Slow down.
Sorry. Never had to speak in front of commissioners before. I would like to request the purchase of a laptop and docking station for the Veteran Services Office. I have two bids for the purchase of laptops, the docking stations, the cost of installation and configuration. The first one is an HP Pro Book four fifty G eight with eight gigabyte, eight gigabytes RAM. And then the other one is a Lenovo ThinkPad. They are very similar when you, when I looked at them. But I would like to ask for the option of option one, which is the HP Pro, to include the docking station with the cost of the laptop at nine hundred and fifty dollars, the docking station at three hundred and fifty. The, uh, the bid was for two hundred and fifty to three fifty, so I figured let's go on the high end, just to save ourselves just in case. And the installation and configuration at two hundred and fifty, this would total fif- one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. What this laptop would do is to, would allow easier mobility for the office to assist and file claims for the veterans in Yankton County. The option of having a laptop, I believe, would be enough to increase the amount of veterans' claims through the mobility. This would allow the office to be able to file claims at the nursing homes, assisted living, and various community and outreach events. Essentially, this would allow the office to bring the materials to the individuals without having to print out the forms, have them sign them, bring them back, scan them, put them into the system. All these steps add time to the process when this process can be done much quicker and more cost effective.
I move approval of the recommendation.
I don't know that he was done yet.
Oh.
He paused for breath, I think.
You better keep it, Cody. You better keep going.
So I have a motion by Kettering and second by Clemish to approve the request. Further discussion?
Did you take, get any more bids other than the one from Craig?
I just got the ones from Craig.
He usually does our, all our.
All our stuff.
Yeah.
What about budget wise, Patty? Did you review?
We, we'll probably have to supplement, you know, like we, at the end of the year. But I'm wondering if, you know, with that money that, for, we can get for broadband? Do you think that would?
You know, I scanned through that today, looking for a place in there, and we've got time to still do that. I think it would be maybe doable, but I'm not confident on that.
Because if you get this, you'll need a hotspot or something.
Yes. Yes, I did put that in my budget already for next year.
Okay.
Just in anticipation to put in for a hotspot.
He's going to use one of my old, I got new hotspots. He's going to use one of the old ones.
Okay.
Forms are pretty much all online anywhere.
They're all online. All it is, is I, there's only one item I would have to take from my office with me, which is the signature pad. I just plug that right into the laptop. They can sign it right then and there, and if there's any other paperwork, I can complete at the office with their permission. What this would do is take away the desktop in the office itself.
You're going to get rid of the desktop?
I won't need both computers.
We'll sell them.
Okay.
Well, I don't know what they're going to do with them, but I won't need. I won't need both.
We'll surplus them and sell them, like, probably next year. Just, because when, we'll, we'll have a refresh next year, so we'll all get new ones again, and then we'll just put them on.
The surplus.
Yeah. I would like to be able to keep that screen so I can do dual screens.
You'd like to do what?
That is very vital.
The dual, that have two.
Oh, with the two screens?
And we don't have any laptops available right now. Or iPad. Can this be done on like an iPad?
Wouldn't recommend it. I'm not quite sure if it can be. I don't know if the iPad would have the capability for the.
You wouldn't have storage and stuff on there.
Well, this all meshes with the V E S system, and there's a lot of typing on the forms, from what I understand, so.
Further discussion? Then we're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero, and I will do a little checking to see if our new money can be used for that somehow.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks for staying.
It can't come out of the two point two million we got?
That's what I mean. You gotta. If you can defend it, we can do it, but the, I haven't found that I can defend it yet.
Okay.
So District Three might be able to give us some guidance there. Thirteen, appoint drainage commission members, and we've got three openings and.
We had three openings, and we have, luckily, we had three incumbents that were willing to serve again. We didn't have any other applicants. Tom Bixler, Frank Kralicek Junior, and Casey Cruz are willing to serve again, so they were the only three applicants.
You have the three names there that you can choose from?
I mean, just move, move approval of the three applicants. I don't think we need a vote.
Can we just move approval? We've got three.
Second.
The opening's three, three applicants.
Yeah, there's three openings.
Never mind.
So we should be good. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the applicants for the three open positions.
I would move to approve the three applicants for the three open positions.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Clemish, to approve Tom Bixler, Frank Kralicek Junior, and Casey Cruz to the Drainage Commission for three-year terms. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Item fourteen, add domestic partnership under Health Insurance Coverage Section seven thirteen. And Karen did a little checking, and I believe that's in the packet, correct?
It is, yes.
On that. So we need to add this language to our manual, our handbook.
Yep, that's all we needed.
Unless there's further questions, I'd entertain a motion to add domestic partnership language to seven thirteen.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to add domestic partnership to seven thirteen. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. We are at item fifteen. Rural transitional housing. Commissioner Clemish, did you have anything you wanted to say here?
Gary, did you want to go take this one?
So we started a little bit of discussion on rural transitional zoning, and maybe thinking of reaching out to those folks and seeing if they'd be interested in, in converting to a residential or commercial type use. I've created a spreadsheet in the past that has all those parcels that are R T currently, and, and what they may or may not be best fitted for. And so I think what we're kind of thinking is that we would send letters out if commission's in agreement, that they would do some, from, do some rezones for free for these people that are in R T, and, and then just see if, if we could get some more residential and commercial zones out there for, for people to look to do some, some future housing and things. And like I said, there are some, a lot of existing homes and a lot of existing businesses already, too, that we would bring into compliance that way. So I think that's kind of the thought process at this time.
How many landowners did you send letters to?
We haven't sent any yet. That's, that's kind of the plan, but there was probably, I don't remember how many parcels there was total in those five R T areas, but, but it's a fair amount.
We talking twenty-five or a hundred?
No, more like a hundred. Yeah, so.
I know you were gone at the last meeting. I guess I would probably prefer, feel more comfortable that we directed, I guess, what, where they want to go before we send anything out. You know, come with.
We, we have the map up here.
Okay, this, these parcels, we think should go to ag because of this, and these should go to commercial, these should go to R one, two, or three, and then reasons. And then, you know, before just a shotgun, hey, we'll rezone you for free.
No, I agree. I, I mean, I, I guess I thought that's what I would put in the form letter, is that, like I said, I've already went through them once, and say, you seem to be suited for this. If you're interested in that, contact.
We, we can pull up the map, and Gary, when I talked to him, wasn't thinking about sending it to every R T, just certain ones, you know, because we have R T, north, south, I'm sorry, northeast and west of us, and it, some of those places don't make as much sense as others. And the focus probably would be west of town, at least initially, so.
So I think basically, this is sideways, but, you know, everything in blue here is the R T. And so we just, especially, I think we'd want to focus on the U S eighty-one corridor. Mostly, probably, these out west, these areas around three fourteen and things. The floodplain area, I'm not so sure we want to focus on that right away. It probably doesn't make a lot of sense to do this west half, but I think everything east or west of eighty-one, we'd probably focus on those blue, blue parcels.
So do we need to bring the city in on this because they have some jurisdiction out there in their vision for what these areas need to be?
This would only be R T. Yeah, the gray is the E T J. So this would all be outside of, of their jurisdiction.
We did speak about this, with the city in the past, about extending the E T J, and at, at least at this point, there's no interest in that.
No, there was not the last time we had a.
That would have been the ideal situation, but there.
So what is that zone, then, that E T J? I mean, what's?
That is, that, that's under city jurisdiction. It's, it's not in the city limits, but the city has the control over the building permits.
They have their own zoning on it. I couldn't tell you.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is what is that gray for my benefit?
It varies, depending on the parcels.
Okay, so there's still some ag land in there, and there's residential.
A little bit of everything.
Residential, for sure.
Yeah, and we can certainly get the city zoning map if you want to see it.
Well, I just thought, you know, the efforts, they may be, they're obviously wanting to expand the city, too. And if the county and the city work together to get a good plan for that whole area, because if we're doing something that's not going to match with what the city envisions, that's kind of a, not a good long-term plan.
Yeah, I can.
Can you make an overlay?
Yeah, we certainly could, and, and before we get letters sent and things, I'll certainly contact Dave and have that discussion.
Yeah, just make sure we're not totally.
It'll take a while to get everything processed and all those things, so. That's kind of the thought process to start with.
Do you have a timeline on when you want to get letters out, Ben?
Gary, what was your thought? I guess, uh, what, what did you think? It'd be nice to do some of it maybe this summer.
Yeah, I, I was thinking by, by late summer, we, we should have a plan in place and start getting them out, and then, and then in the winter, fall, winter, we'd start doing rezone, start scheduling rezones if people are interested.
Maybe try, put a, I don't know, six-month deadline on? Would that be too long, or?
Yeah, and I think we could, we could do it where, you know, maybe every other zoning, depending on how many we get.
Yeah.
The more we could put together, the less the burden would be on everybody. And it's a hundred percent voluntary.
And then from there, we can start looking at some of the other zones, too. Sounds good.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Any other comments on rural transitional housing? Don, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. We are now at public comment. So at this time, anyone who wants to make a public comment has three minutes to come up and make a public comment. You want to go ahead?
Find one on here, maybe. I lost, I think.
Oh, I've got one.
Ms. Williams?
Sandy Williams. I live in Yankton County. I just want to make an observation. Thank you. Sherry, you commented that the, it would be, make sense for the county to meet with the city on that rural transition. Wouldn't it have also made sense to do a comprehensive plan that included the city before you start doing all of the zoning ordinances? Just an observation. Back in two thousand nineteen, I came and stood up here in like March or April, and that's when all the chaos was going on in planning and zoning. And one of the comments I made was, I hope that the three new commissioners, who are now the three old commissioners, would take the same level of scrutiny to other departments. They did not. And I ask again, why not? But I also would like to say, why aren't you not scrutinizing your current planning and zoning department as well? When I looked through the, what's on the website, and then I called the office and I asked, what's the significance of the bold and the underline in this final draft form? And the deputy didn't know. He told me I could go online and compare that with the older version. Okay? So I asked to talk to your planning administrator, and he said that that's where the changes were made. Well, just on page three, I found four things that are different, that are not highlighted. So obviously, the level of scrutiny is not the same. And do you really even know what it is you're agreeing to? Because what's on the website and what I was told is not the same.
Other public comments?
All this talk on Article 5, and I understand we've been over and over and over this and discussed it a number of times, but until we have an actual revision that isn't going to change anymore, it's really difficult to have people come up here and say, this is what we like and this is what we don't like, because we have no clue. So now you're heading into hearings that you want to vote on it. It would have been nice to have a discussion about it with at least one meeting where we knew what the changes all were and what we had planned on, and what you planned on putting into Article 5. Thank you.
Louis Johnson Volin, I have to agree with Jay on the fact that, oh, yeah, we're going to talk about this, we're going to do this, but we don't know what we're going to do for sure yet, and we're going to have a copy of it someplace. Some of us have a job, some of us have two jobs. And I have noticed one big transition in help in this county since you people took over. And I'm wondering what it is, because I think a lot of times, the caliber of the service has gone down. And I, for one, am sick and tired of the fact that, oh, jeez, we have a special interest group pulling our strings, and we'll just sue people till they go broke. How many lawsuits has the county won? How many lawsuits has the county lost? How many times can people, and I asked one of the hog persons on who all filed a complaint against his hog building, and he said, nobody would tell him who filed the complaint. Now, if you have something you file on lawsuit, I would think that you should find out who the hell signed the complaint saying, oh, he hasn't started building. And the day that the decision was sent out that he hadn't begun construction, he'd only had pigs in this building that wasn't built for a week. I don't call that really being on your best game there. And I was upset that he settled out of court, because I think that would have made Yankton County the laughing stock of the whole damn country. And if that's what you're shooting for, you're doing good. I can remember 60 years ago, Dad wanted to put up a silo, he built it. The neighbor didn't want to, he didn't build it. They didn't have to ask everybody within 30 miles. They didn't have people 60 miles away suing them. I can't see where zoning has done anything but create a mess. I go up to the lake, and that's the biggest junkyard for campers I've seen in years. And we're going to put out more and more and more. And we're putting in sewer systems out there where the sewage comes up to the top of the ground, and don't deny it, you surely should have known that, everybody else does. And we're not concerned about the fact that we'll put 100 campers in, and we'll put in four septic tanks in a field drain over an aquifer that's 12 to 16 foot deep, and it's sand. But we're going to worry about a hog building that's a solid concrete pit over 200 feet of clay and make those guys jump through the hoops. You know, if we want to micromanage, let's force every farmer to farm with two-row equipment. That way, nobody will be offended, and they won't be jealous. In the meantime, I think it's time to, let's see the damn rules. Let's be able to look at them and then have your vote.
Thank you. Other comments?
Jim Petrick from Gayville. I apologize, I've been out of the loop on this thing for a while, like a zillion other small businesses in the country. Labor situation is pretty tight at our place a lot of days, and I haven't been very present here, and I apologize. I haven't been involved in some of this stuff in Clay County in the past. I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this, and I know it's quite an undertaking. But, you know, I've said this before in this room, and I'll just say it again, you know, I look at Lincoln and Minnehaha County have 10 times as many people and 10 times as much livestock, if you look at the numbers. And it can be done, and it can be done in a harmonious way. We just, sometimes the squeakiest wheel is an outlier, and they need to be considered as such. And sometimes the vomthor is an outlier, and they need to be considered as such too. And we just need to pursue workable stuff here. But just, like I say, blasting through this quick after Sandy had asked me this, you know, there is some stuff in here too that, you know, I would have some issues with on these definitions, and some of them, you know, there's kind of some no man's land here. Like, for instance, if a solid minor system is 90% solid minor and a liquid minor system is 90% liquid minor, that's still, there's a big window in between those two. And obviously, an open lot system on a rainy day is no longer considered a solid minor system, and perhaps a confinement facility with a four-inch crest on a newly pumped pit is no longer a liquid minor system, you know. So like I say, there's some what-ifs and some stuff here that needs further consideration. So I, you know, I can say I respect your comments there, but I do think, you know, there's more questions to ask and more what-ifs, and I'm hopeful that, you know, it can be done in a harmonious way. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments?
Zane Williams, Irene. I did, the way I look at this here, now, the small nurseries are going to go to a quarter-mile, and the 2,400 head are going to go to a half-mile, the way it looks to me. I was just talking with a large dairy in northwest Iowa, who I do do business with, and their 5,000-head dairy cow setback is a half-mile. And we have, well, I don't know, I guess I haven't figured it out, but it'd probably be three, four miles. Anyway, that dairy contributes about $3.2 million of wages a year. They spend $25 to $30 million in inputs that all go into the local economy. They are the largest employer in that county. And yet, we prohibit them, and they're paving miles of county roads over there. And thank you, Yankton County, that you're patching up 448 today. Mike was doing a great job, I stopped to talk to him, and we appreciate that. But it shows the magnitude of what agriculture can do. The only thing, and I haven't had a chance to go through all these changes since I was removed from the planning and zoning, but I do notice one thing here on page 12, that it says, if the AFo or CAfo operator sells the operation to a non-family member, this setback exemption from the new residents is not transferable. And so I guess I'm in question of what that means. Do all of a sudden, does that new operation have to go through the whole CUP process and all that? Which, if it does, I feel is a great problem. I don't think Main Street does that. If you sell a business, the next business has to have their own stipulations. So if that's in there, that is a bad, bad, bad one, especially for some of us older retired guys that might do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have one more. Wanda, thank you for making eye contact, because this side of the room does not.
I prefer to take notes, but. All right, go ahead, Dennis.
Dennis Michael, Yankton, on the planning zoning board. We spent an awful lot of time, a lot of verbiage, a lot of going back and forth, a lot of things about trying to come to some kind of a conclusion that everybody can live with. And while there's a lot of things that we all have issues still on, it still becomes a big give-and-take issue. I was really disappointed in the last planning zoning meeting when we got kind of shoved back down in the hole again. I've been a livestock producer my whole life, and the only place in Yankton County I can raise livestock is in ag district. And I don't feel that, I can't go into residential districts, I can't go into transitional district, all this, all these different districts, and put a cattle yard up or a feed yard, or even move in there with my livestock. I have to do it in an ag district where my crops are produced, where I have the infrastructure out there for what I need to make my business work, and to try to limit myself to what I can do. But I don't, I don't feel it's right that, because somebody moves in across the road from me and buys an acre, that they can tell me after 67 years of farming that I can't do what I want to do. And I think that that is the big sticker with all my friends here that are, with organizations that they're with and what their farming operators that they use, we're livestock producers, we're not all grain crop farmers. And it's a very hard thing to get the grain people to side with the livestock producers in a lot of these issues, because you can sell corn for $7 a bush over the day, but you know, that has to go someplace, and that changes around. And it's foolish to me, and it's been foolish to me since pre-zoning, that started zoning, when the feedlot wanted to build out there, and everybody wanted to put their grain on a truck and haul to Sioux City, when they could haul it across the road. And I think that that is a consideration that's totally lost in our discussion here about keeping it here and keeping the business going. We have major problems with our roads. I mean, there's a few places that it takes tax dollars to fix it, and it takes the right people to get it done. And I think that, you know, I've always had a deal about, in the road thing, about who oversees the workers, who oversees their foreman, who oversees that, the boss, and who oversees the boss? Somebody needs to be checking up on this, because we've got some disasters out there, and it needs, they're just because of lack of whatever. But the tax dollars aren't going to take care of it fast enough if we let these roads go the way they're going. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, public comment is closed. Thank you. We are at Commissioner Updates. Would anyone care to share? All right, well, we have a, oh, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, June 4th, I went to Brookings along with the state's attorney, Deb Lilly, went with Cody Frick and Savannah Sullivan from the Boys and Girls Club, and got to see their program. It was, I learned a lot, and I think their system seems like it works pretty good. And so it was nice to see how another county does it. And I don't know, did you have anything you wanted to add on that? It was nice that we went up there and we could see what they had. So, that's all I got.
Joe or Wanda, anything?
I have been in communication with Ross Denherter with regard to the city marijuana ordinance, and he just sent it to me, a new version of the state's rules, which I can forward. But I just got those yesterday, late, and I haven't had the chance to read them yet.
Okay, thank you. Joe, anything?
I don't. Eight-county meeting coming up, I actually don't think I'm going to be able to make it.
Okay, that's Thursday in Beersford. Anyone else going to that?
To what?
The eight-county meeting in Beersford?
Thursday.
All righty. And you advertised that in the paper? Good.
No, we don't have to.
Oh, that one we don't?
Yeah, there's a state law that kind of forgives, that's like convention and.
Oh, gotcha. And then on the 25th, which is Friday, we have a strategic meeting from 9:00 to 10:00, and then from 10:00 to about 1:00, we have budget. So that'll be a busy day.
As long as we talked about budget, this is the timeline that I have to, I will be doing, July 20th, we will be approving the provisional budget. Or, I'm sorry, July 7th.
7.
At the meeting?
July 20th, I'm sorry.
The second one.
Yep. And then it'll be published August 13th, and the resolution on the 20th. And then we will approve the annual budget September 21st. And we can have meetings in between now for the provisionals published, because we can change it before they, we update the annual.
Sherri?
Yep, Don, we can hear you.
Do you plan on zooming that meeting?
Going to still be in Mexico?
Yep, we can zoom it, Don, if you need to be on Zoom.
I'd like to do that if we can, if Valley can send the information out to me.
All righty.
Thank you.
And that was June 25th, right, Don?
I, oh, I've got another week, then I'll be back. I thought you said this Friday.
Oh, no, no, next Friday, sorry about that, I should have made that clear.
Okay, I'll be back, thank you.
Okay, I was going to say, man, you're really enjoying yourself down there.
Let us know if you get detained.
It's pretty nice. Love the Mexican people, they're great.
In your budget that we just gave you tonight, in the back, there's the city's requests for everything.
Okay.
And they're, they'll be coming on the 25th, along with the library, did you tell the library?
Yeah, the 25th.
Yep. And they would, and they meet then the 28th, at their regular meeting, is it the 28th?
Yeah, that's the city commission meeting.
Yeah. They will approve their budget, so they would kind of like for you to look at that and look those figures over.
Okay. All right, with no other Commissioner Updates, we are on to item 18, executive session for poor relief issues, pursue it to SDCL 125, 228, 13, and 28, 13, 1.3. Entertain a motion to go into executive session for poor relief.
I move to go into executive session for poor relief.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy, to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are now in executive session.
I move to go back out of executive session into regular session.
So motion by Fox, second by Clemish, to come out of executive session.
Do we need to vote?
Oh, Don, you're muted. If you want to get off mute. Go ahead. Make your motion.
Got to vote.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. 5-0, we're out of executive session, sorry. Yeah, that was my bad, sorry.
All right, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to pen the files of CW 21-036 through CW 21-048, based on the following South Dakota codified laws, 28-13-1.3, sub-paragraph 1, 28-13-34.2, 28-13-33-2.
Second.
So motion by Healy, second by Fox, to pen the cases as stated. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, we are at items for next meeting, so we will have our first Article 5 hearing and reading. and reading, and I do believe it's in our best interest to decide that night how to handle the amendment that is coming from the Planning Commission. The comments made tonight are fair, they need to understand exactly what is being voted on. So that first meeting, we need to decide how we're going to handle that amendment. So at the second hearing.
Is that July 6?
July 6. So at the second hearing, we have, we couldn't, we couldn't vote on it tonight, because we didn't have it advertised as a hearing, so we didn't have much choice on that. Ah, thanks for the reminder, the drainage ordinance proposed changes will also be heard on the 6th and the 20th.
I guess I would, on the drainage ordinance, I would like a vote on whether or not we even retain that.
I think we already did that before we went into the effort of amending it.
I don't know if we ever voted, and if we would have, that would have been before Wanda, I believe, would have been sworn in. I just, I struggle to understand what we're accomplishing with our drainage ordinance.
Other items for next meeting?
Do we have to talk about weed again?
Let's put it on there. Let's probably just be running.
MJ.
I don't know if we want to tackle, depends on the length of the agenda, it's not a high priority, but is there any, anybody entertain getting rid of right-of-ways and entrance applications at the commission level?
Doing what?
Just having the highway superintendent approve entrance applications rather than bringing them to the commission, and same with right-of-way.
The occupancy.
Occupancy.
Don't they have to have petitions?
No, the, these are just like tonight with Mid-Continent working in the ditch. Is there any reason the commission has to approve that? Can the highway superintendent just okay that? Or new entrance applications, if I'm building a house and I'm putting a culvert in a access to the road? Okay.
Why don't we put that on the agenda?
That's what I'm saying.
To get rid of them.
Yep.
Well, we need to make sure we can, yes.
Okay, I'll send you.
You got that one?
Did you guys get the email from Jen Loder from District 3?
No.
No.
About the STIP meeting?
I don't think I did.
Did you send that out, Gary? Okay, this is something different.
Good, because I haven't got it.
It's at the, the STIP annual meeting at the District 3, at 10:30.
What day?
Tuesday, June 22nd. Do you guys get any emails from Jen?
Sometimes.
When I was the District 3 liaison, I did, but I didn't see that one.
I can maybe give her all your guys' emails if you want them.
Did that come today?
Just forward it to.
I haven't checked my email for a while.
Just forward them to you?
Yeah, that'd be fine, thank you.
What day was that, Patty?
June 22nd.
At 10:30 a.m.
Okay. All right, if they're, oh, go ahead.
I've been called worse.
Do you want from your county email or your personal?
Doesn't matter.
Anything else?
Are you going to set a different schedule for those two commission meetings? In other words, do everything?
A special meeting?
Not a special meeting, but a schedule.
Reorganized.
Where you would do everything but your hearing.
Article 5.
Right. Okay. Yep, so is. Yeah.
Do you want to, since it's summer, do you want to possibly start like 5:30, so you are done with everything?
Before then.
I think if we change the time for that meeting, then people say, oh, for this meeting, you set a different meeting time, and we won't hear the end of it. But I agree with you, but.
I mean, because you're otherwise.
Well, it can be scheduled and then moved, and everybody sits here the whole time, but.
Well, we can do our best to put county employees before that, squish everything in there, and techni- Well, and technically, things like claims and stuff, we can do at the end, right? Because.
They also don't take much time.
But you have to stay here anyway. So, you know, things like that, we can put till the very end, and any county employee, I'd say, get him on the schedule before 6:30 as best we can. You know, so Gary's going to be here most of the time, so anything that Gary's got can be on any time.
You can do all my stuff on.
Yeah, so that'll help move that address. Which one is first? Yes, because that'll be the, that won't be as long. Yeah, because the, well, I mean, I'd hate to have for all those folks to wait through the whole thing, of course, they could be here for both, so thank you for that.
Good suggestion.
With that, unless there's anything else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
You got it.
Second.
Motion by Healy, second by Fox, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.